Okay, Council then brings us to the reports from council and I'll look for a volunteer at one end of the table. Councilor Doherty kicks it off.
I've got no reports on this one, Your Worship.
Streamline. Counselor Rorschag.
And I'll follow suit with that at this point.
Counselor Wires.
Well, just hold on to those little horses while I get my report up here because we're really cr-.
That was your time to escape.
There it is. Okay. So, I'll begin my report. September 20th, the Grand Forks Environment Committee met. The drop minutes will appear in this week's information summary because there are some recommendations that are coming forward with some projects that will be forthcoming from Counselor Smith has one that's coming up next week. The nephalometer air quality study has achieved a good base of community volunteers who will be meeting October the 23rd for the next step in monitoring our air shed for the winter months. The B.C. Lung Association is a partner at the Environment Table and they held a public forum at Selkirk College in partnership with IHA and Health Canada, First Nations and Inuit Health Branch. That public forum took place the following day, September the 21st, and I had set up the portable nephalometer project along with the reports that we had, that Jordan Andrews had worked on during the summer months. So copies of those, that report is available at the front desk at City Hall for the months of June, July, and August. So there will be a committee of volunteers that are derived from the Environment Committee Table that will be continuing the air quality monitoring through the winter and into the spring. And that is a partnership that we have with the University of Victoria who has lent us this nephalometer and the B.C. Lung Association. So September the 24th, I represented the city in welcoming 157 conference attendees for the, from the 11 regional hospital auxiliaries. And this was at the Kootenai Boundary Area Conference for the B.C. Association of Healthcare Auxiliaries. This was hosted by our local Grand Forks Auxiliary to the Boundary Hospital Society. This year's theme was "Volunteers Are Worth a Mint." Director of Acute Care for the Kootenai Boundary, Ingrid Hemp, commented on my reference to the healthcare challenges that we're facing with an aging population as one example and where our community and IHA are working together pointing to the upcoming opening of the Silver Kettle Facility in Grand Forks which has been a major contribution to this community and one that we can well recognize as badly being needed. The major funding achieved to purchase equipment for the Boundary Hospital however, by the Grand Forks Auxiliary to the Boundary Hospital, over the previous 10 years surpassed $821,000, noting that smaller contributions like when they make to Relay for Life and that aren't included in that. So their actual contributions in our community over the past 10 years have exceeded $1 million out of our local auxiliary. This information was shared by their president, Willie Triverry. Representatives in attendance traveled from the South Salkan, there's 11 auxiliaries in this region, Salmo, Nelson, Roslyn Trail, Nikas, Caslow, Christina Lake, and New Denver. The Grand Forks Auxiliary ranks 24th out of the top 25 auxiliaries in this province in the category of fundraising, in the categories of $100,000 to $200,000 annually. Their contribution for 2011 to our Boundary Hospital was $222,804.14. And out of that, they were able to purchase a coagulation analyzer and for the transfusion capital, a medicine fridge, an ECG machine, a hover mat, a portable ultrasound, transport ventilator, plus rental, plus renal unit furnishings, and an additional $10,000 contribution to the digital mammography campaign for the Kootenai Boundary Regional Hospital over in Trail. So some excellent work from our strong group of volunteers at the auxiliary and the excellent work they do through our thrift shop here in Grand Forks.
Is that their primary fundraiser?
Yes, yes, it is. It is, number one. So thank you for, Your Worship, for the opportunity to speak. It was quite a, I got a nice little gift package too.
Great.
On September 27th, the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce held their monthly biz after biz at the Christina Lake Welcome Center and it was well attended and actually 36 businesses were there networking and had their booths set up and mingling and it was really a good turnout, full house. I also attended the BEDC meeting on October the 2nd with a number of council members. In 2013, the BEDC funding will change and so we had an opportunity to sit down with the BEDC Committee to look at opportunities into 2013 for funding and potential avenues of economic development that we want to branch out into along with the tourism that is already on the plane. And... And that's the end of my report, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Wires. Counselor Kendall.
Thank you, Your Worship. First, I'd like to say that I along with several, yourself and several other councilors, attended my first UVCN convention in Victoria and I felt it was a privilege to have done so. I attended a Colton Valley Farm Tour. We had the opportunity to visit a dairy operation, a small organic vegetable operation which supplies directly to hotels in Victoria, very profitable. A family run mixed farm with a premises restaurant and they market their produce and everything else directly to families on a weekly basis, which I found quite interesting. And we got to visit an independent winery on that same tour. I attended a forum on the roles and responsibilities of councilor mayors. I attended a small talk forum that highlighted issues and successes of small town B.C. One of the primary discussions there was the lack of medical services in small communities and suggestions on how to better use existing facilities and some, and the concept of zoning changes to accommodate maybe more than one residence on some properties to allow for the possibility of multi-generational families to live, work, and support each other. I found that very interesting. There was talks about secession planning, economic development, transportation, and environment, a lot of information at these conferences. Success stories such as the village of Lumby's tenacity in achieving the development of a seniors housing complex similar to Silver Kettle and the complex care facility and how they're looking at expanding the services in these type of facilities to alleviate some of the stress on hospitals and move it back, people back to their homes. I attended policy sessions on a number of issues. Was privileged to hear the speeches from the premier and the leader of the opposition and had the opportunity to meet many people from industry and local and provincial governments. And we all have very common issues and it's good to have the chance to talk to these people. I along with Counselor Wires and yourself, Counselor Smith, attended the BEDC meeting on October 2nd. On October 4th, Mayor Taylor, Counselor Smith, and I attended the annual Thanksgiving Seniors' Appreciation Dinner hosted by Daniel and Jennifer Chu, hosted by our Counselor Crog. It was a wonderful meal and it's wonderful to see that type of community spirit by someone who doesn't even live in this community. The outpouring of providing meal for over 200 seniors in our community just out of the brim of their heart, I thought was very commendable. And lastly, I attended the meeting of the Bonner Museum Society today. They had a bannered year with many visitors. They have many projects going on including a new blacksmith shop and they agreed today to enter into a 10-year lease agreement with the USCC on that property so they think that establishes them as a long-term viable organization and community. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Counselor Kendall. Counselor Crog.
Okay then. My report, share it, cover that. Cover that. So, yeah, the BEDC was, was an excellent meeting. The future, the focus, you know, so I think that'll, that'll actually be a good thing that we're actually at that, at that meeting and sitting down with that board. But yeah, pretty well everything else was covered, so.
Okay. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Your Worship. Have we talked about the deer count?
Is that a prompter?
Well, I was just looking at my calendar and so the 18th is our deer count.
Yeah, we had a, yeah, we had a meeting before.
Right, that's right. So anyway, I did attend the deer count. It was an early morning, 6:30 sharp. We were all out there gearing to go. We got in our little teams. We broke up the community into five sections, right, five quadrant areas and went about counting the deer. And then we had a meeting with the deer committee after that and I think there was some good discussion on, you know, where it's at, where we need to go. And there was representation too from First Nations and I'm looking forward to hearing from them as a delegation next, next to deer committee meeting, right?
Yes.
That's great. And the Environment Committee was on the 20th, so I attended that. And a couple of good things came out of there. I've been working with Jenny Coleshill and a couple of other folks I met in Cranbrook at the Wildlife, Urban Wildlife Management Committee meeting and bats. So we're, we're looking at getting some bat houses. We got the financial support from the Environment Committee to get a few put up in the community. And this is to help conserve bats because bats are an important part of the ecosystem and to possibly, you know, assist in mosquito control during mosquito season. So that's ongoing, a little more work to do before we get those erected, but Tellus has been kind enough to donate some poles and Jenny Coleshill and myself have identified some appropriate locations, so look forward to that. Second thing that came out of that committee was the pesticide collection for both agricultural and domestic pesticides that, you know, people may have in their sheds or agricultural nurseries. They can't use them anymore but they don't have the means to get rid of them or don't know how to dispose them properly. So I've been working with the national outfit called Clean Farms who do handle the disposal, safe disposal of agricultural pesticides and then with Product Care which is the end of the line use organization that deals with producers of domestic pesticides. So we're going to tie two campaigns in together as one, we're going to have Pesticide Awareness Week from October 17th to 24th where domestic pesticides can be taken up to the landfill and Product Care will come and take them at the end of that week to dispose of them. And Advanced Orchard, or Advanced Nursery I should say, is going to be the depot for agricultural pesticides which will then at the 24th be taken to Oliver where the Clean Farms has a larger depot set up for the Okanagan and then they'll take them to a furnace, you know, the incineration things there to get rid of them permanently. So that's that. And then, of course, there's the UVCN, which is great. You know, tried to attend some different things from other people there just to kind of spread out the wealth of knowledge and try to contact as many people as possible. So I, I was at the small talk forum along with Counselor Kendall, but, you know, tried to hook up with another circle of people so that we were kind of sharing contacts there. And sat in on a session with the Minister of Environment, Terry Lake, after which I actually went down and managed to take him aside for a minute and talk to him about deer and push our resolution for the provincial government to come up with a wildlife management plan. He was actually quite surprised to know that a large part of the culling that's done is through deer vehicle interaction, so I thought, you know, that's something you've got to pay attention to, so. And then I had a chance to meet Kristi Clark and I, I actually asked her to come and visit us and she said, "Yeah." So I'm hoping we can kind of, you know, make like a resolution here or something to formally invite her to our community to see what our issues are regardless of whether or not she's empowered next, you know, next term, at least she would be somewhere in the parliament. So if she's aware of some of our issues, I think it would be a good thing to our advantage.
That's if she wins her riding.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. So did you want to make that a motion?
I would like to make that a motion.
Do you have a second for that? This is to invite Kristi Clark to visit our committee. Counselor Doherty, second. Discussion.
Don't give her a free deer.
I can't hurt.
Name a deer after her.
Further discussion? So this is to write an invitation letter to Kristi to invite her before the election. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry.
I think that's pretty much it, Your Worship.
Thank you. I have a couple of items to cover and I'll combine again my regional responsibilities and city responsibilities, but I will answer any regional question that people may have. The first regional issue, I brought forward the idea that we would host a meeting of the border people between the regional border people along the borders. It was really popular at the regional level. They feel that that would be a great initiative if Grand Forks could go ahead and begin to make those contacts. It's probably going to take a considerable length of time to get it together, probably six or eight months to, to set it up, but there's strong regional support. They felt very vulnerable in terms of their border crossings all along the region. So this would include probably about nine or 10 different municipalities and regions. Actually, everybody wanted in on it, so it could be bigger than that, but conferences like that, if we plan it right, could make us money, so let's not look at it as a draw on our taxpayers and keep the burden off our staff and leave it more for regional staff because it should be a regional initiative. Comment on the deer meeting, deer committee meeting. We are going ahead, we have a staff person working for us that we hired Frank Moreland who's doing a great job getting the details together for our next meeting. He's gathering a lot of information that we didn't have in one place and we should be able to have a better handle on local statistics and information. I'd like to comment on one thing that a member, a new member of the deer committee, Mr. Barry Brando brought up, which is in fact that there are so few deer in the surrounding area of Grand Forks that we could in fact be the last gene pool in the region for whitetail that it's become so apparent to hunters and outdoors people that the deer have moved from, completely from the surrounding areas and the only whitetail in the region are inhabiting the city of Grand Forks. Quite an endorsement for us, but anyway, a good point made by Mr. Brando. The green bin situation, regional responsibility, but our city staff are doing an excellent job answering questions and dealing with this at the front desk. The complaints, and there haven't been a lot, that I had brought to my attention are more related to when people put their bins out and that if they were cautious with their bins as they were cautious with their garbage, then things would be much better, that you can't put your bins out and expect them at this time of year not to attract some attention by animals. But putting them out at 7 o'clock or 8 o'clock in the morning should, should be, you know, solve some of that problem. So I think the green bin program is going well and I compliment the regional staff as well on their attention to following up on complaints. And that's, that's it. I'll leave the rest. We've covered a lot of it today. I will answer any regional district questions and anything might happen. Counselor Rorschag.
It's not as much a question, it's more of a comment, that, that comment you made there in regards to the deer population in the city limits, maybe that information should be passed on to a story company for the branding of Grand Forks.
Well, I'd like to see the deer committee market a T-shirt which I think might subsidize some of the funding that will help us control it.
Do you need a model?
Yes. Any further questions on the regional district situation? Again, we're into budget time at the regional district as we are here, so it should be an exciting month or two in terms of looking at services that we share. Hearing none, motion to accept the council reports and the regional district report. Counselor Smith, Counselor Rorschag, all those in favor? And we are moving down to... Typically, we're getting lost. Information items. No, we do, we have one more item. This is the Corporate Officers Report License of Occupation for the Rotary Customs House. And this is basically to allow the continued location of the Rotary Custom House on the courtyard of Gallery 2. Can I have a motion to that effect? Counselor Doherty, Counselor Wires, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Information items. A motion to accept as we identify them, items A to I. Counselor Kendall, second. Counselor Rorschag. Let me get it up here. Industry Forest Lands and Natural Resources, a response to the mayor's letter on regards to Marshall Lake, receive for information. Thank you correspondence from Selkirk College for the work done adjacent to the college campus. That looks really nice over there. An excellent job of contracting it out. The next item is correspondence from Crime Stoppers requesting funding to operate a program in the area. Last year, council offered funding at a level of $500 as a membership and I'm assuming that is, that that comes out of a membership line within the budget. So do you wish to, to join that organization for the same amount? Counselor Doherty? That's $500. Counselor Kendall, second.
Yes.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Correspondence from Alex Adamanenko congratulating Lynn Birch on her retirement from the city, receive for information. Correspondence from Alex Adamanenko congratulating Doug Allen on the appointment as our new CAO. And correspondence from the Canadian Legion requesting the annual Poppy Campaign. So not only do we give them permission for the whole ceremony on the memorance day, but we have traditionally donated $100 to the Poppy Campaign. Counselor Doherty? Counselor Kendall? All those in favor? Just to remind ourselves, that Poppy Campaign doesn't make the local legion any money.
No.
They reminded us the other day. That goes to headquarters.
Actually, it doesn't have to go back to another community. A lot of that.
They, they are not able to keep it for themselves. They have to pass it on. And the other thing is, can we advise in terms of who would be attending this year's ceremonies on November 11th? Is there usually march from Seminole Town, Counselor Doherty, Smith, everybody? Okay, we're all going to be.
Yeah, I'm in reason.
Could show of support. Lidsmark Kootenai, a regional small business service available. Correspondence outlining eligible criteria for small business program, receive for information. B.C. Water and Waste Association advising of the planning stage and participation examples for Drinking Water Week. Refer to the Environment Committee and receive for information. And the final item is the September 17th task list and of completed and in progress tasks and file. We will also be getting more minutes from the deer committee at, on our next agenda as well, so we'll be able to take a closer look at the deer committee operations. The next item of business is bylaws. Council to consider the final reading of road closure, bylaw number 1931. Consideration of final reading. Council to give the final reading of this, can I have a motion? Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, discussion? Counselor Crog?
Yeah, just is there not a chance for the public?
Not at this point in time.
Oh, yeah, it's out.
However, I would like to say that I think there was some work put into this since last you saw this. It gives a second option too, which we're not deciding on this evening. It will be a matter of further discussion with our staff in terms of the implementation of this and I think it's been a creative approach to making it a little more palatable, although I agree it's not going to please everyone. Ready for the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. The second one is the bylaw 1941 Annual Tax Exemption Bylaw. This is final reading of that. We've gone over it and for a second, that's our reading. Counselor Rorschag.
I would actually move myself from this vote.
A motion for final reading.
I'm moving.
Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. We have no lead items and we are down to comments coming immediately. So please come forward.
My comments are regarding the Rossell Road Closure, as you know. I met with each of the council members regarding this closure. I'm somewhat confused here with the, tonight I was just given an option two for the change of one of the closures. I'm just concerned why there's such a panic here to accept this bylaw to close that road without having an alternative in place that the public can view as far as this closure is concerned. The, this option two that I have here that was given to me is a step in the right direction. I'm not denying that, but I haven't had an opportunity to take a look at it nor check it out to see. My main concern is having, as you know, we're in the trucking business and my main concern is having free access to the roads without having offset issues with trailers and dealing with oncoming traffic. So I'm somewhat at a loss here tonight on this proposed bylaw being passed.
Yeah, I think there is some urgency to move ahead with it. It's been on the table now for a couple of months and we are under some obligations to partners in this process, which is Rossell.
I, I follow that. The only thing is that we have no, no straightforward alternative for us. We do, you have passed the road closure, but we haven't given the public what is the alternative for access to that industrial park.
And council hasn't really had a chance to review that option two either.
So wouldn't it make more sense though to review that and discuss those options prior to adopting that bylaw?
I would think not that we need to move forward with it. We know we need to close it and I think this gives us a bit of time now to look at those two options. And so council could choose option one, although I certainly think at this point that you're right, that this is a step in the right direction to, to further recognize the difficulties that you have with long trailers getting in and out.
Right. I just, one other point here, just so you know, it seems somewhat ironic tonight that the Fall Fair Committee was here talking about a permanent home where this particular land and this road that you have discussed- and this road that you have discussed on closing today was the entrance to the old Fireman's Park back in the 50s and 60s. And I still remember that particular home of the Fall Fair. And it had a grandstand there and a racetrack and a barn and show areas. My father had displayed his wares in that particular venue many times in the 60s. And a good portion of the grandstand, when city council at the time decided that the Fireman's Park was to be closed for an industrial area, they allowed the grandstand to be torn down and my dad got the contract for tearing that grandstand down. And a good portion of that grandstand is in his building that we just sold here after his passing on Second Street. So just a point of interest there.
Sure.
Is that the one on the corner?
Corner, Second Street and Highway Three. We still had the ownership. I could take you through there, show you some of the old timbers that are in there. There's quite a few of them in there.
The ghost of Fireman's Park.
Fireman's Park. It seems to come back to haunt you people.
It will. Thank you. And further from the floor.
I don't have any financial interest or...
Identifying yourself, Errol.
I'm Errol Ingham, mayor and council. My thinking is that in the trucking business and everything else, there have been a lot of problems down with landlocked problems, we know. So I think that trailers are not getting any smaller, they're getting bigger, B-trains and everything else. And any corners you put in, it restricts access. I saw this new plan just now, with the street north, a little bit more parallel to the other road, I don't think there'd be a problem here, but I could see trucks in the future even bigger than they are now. So before we make any decisions, we should look at that in a hard way. So all I wanted to say.
I think that's going to be a consideration in any kind of entrance requirements that we look at for any industrial area now. The B-trains are being replaced by C-trains.
They've already been replaced.
Yeah. Getting bigger. All they need is tracks underneath and we'll have trains. Further from the floor.
Les Johnson. First, the Environment Committee meeting, you can watch on YouTube. I was there, cool things up there. Living is at my capacity as the president of the Bonn Hirst Talkle Society. I invite one and all to our annual general reading on the 20th across the street here. We use new fresh blood in the membership and on the board. Yeah, let's see. One last question, talking about where the Fall Fair, et cetera, et cetera. The Sugamodo Potato Field, the big triangular field there, at the apex of out of the north end, there's a stand of pines. Who owns those? Do you know? Is that whose property is that?
I think it's a separate title from the last I saw of that property.
That's not city property? It's...
No.
I was just looking...
That's the one right at the far end of it.
Kind of by your place there.
Yeah, well, behind my place across from where the SBCA used to be, the woodworkers deal. I'm just, I look at that all the time and I wonder, when is the city going to force something to happen like it was Vienna Woods? Because you look at those pines and they're starting to get brown at the tips. The beetle's probably here and as I understand it, the city likes to just take the whole stand out when there's infected trees.
That's not true.
So, well, seems to be the previous behavior. Anyways, what I was going to suggest was if that's part of the same parcel, if you got that parcel, if you use that parcel in the AL or for the Fall Fair, there's a whole stand of lumber there to put up some structure for open air, whatever. That was it. That's all.
Thank you. Nigel, I can see you're chomping at the bit there.
Good evening, your worship, councilors. My name's Nigel James. Tonight I will not chastise the members of council. I won't apologize for doing it last time. I would purely say it was a pity that I felt obliged to do it. I had thought about writing you an incompetence letter about what I, as one of the residents of Grand Forks, would hope the council would do and would operate. I'm not sure that's my job, but after tonight's tirade, then we might, we might feel forced to do that. A couple of random things. Well, we talked about bylaws and people, we can't have a bylaw maintenance officer, not maintenance, but officer of enforcement. There you are. That was in the paper back in April the 4th. We have the Grand Forks City Watch Program. So all the members of the, employees of City Watch could look and see people not obeying bylaws.
To do that, we get fairly frequent requests or reports on our cities.
Excellent. And I've said, except one other aspect is thought about bylaw and that is that the watering bylaw will soon be defunct for the winter and also for the future with the watering meters. And if, I think the bylaw ought to, whatever the future is, ought to be mentioned with that. City lands should be watered at certain other times, as is happening anyway. The city lands are watered during the day, not at night. Either the city obeys their laws or they adjust the law to make sure that Dick Bartlett Park can be watered at another time.
There should be a rationale for our behavior.
Indeed. And the RCMP, I noted, they seem to like to water during the day as well. Perhaps it's to keep the people away or something like that. The deer committee. About the first time I came to council, I produced a letter for all the councilors on the subject of deer. And I said, maybe it's not a problem for us, it should be our solution. We should encourage the deer and encourage people to come here because we proclaim ourselves the deer capital of Canada, of B.C. And get people to come and tourists, et cetera. That one fell on stony ground, but however, think of the good scene. Now we've got an abattoir, mobile abattoir. We can kill our deer and we have venison burgers and venison dogs and other things like that and they will, you see. No mention of that, I won't bother to mention that. One thing I did also, actually feel a bit strongly about, I hadn't mentioned it before, but I did write a letter to the editor and that was on about July the 22nd or so. But it wasn't published because of the Friday storm with the tragic death of Richard Fair, the pines Bible camp. And so therefore it wasn't published. However, the meat of my letter was that if we go for this 100-foot truck at close to $1 million, and from my knowledge of the Bell Telephone Directory and looking at number of entries in Grand Forks, it's about three and a half thousand, it would mean that that's for businesses and people. That would mean about the average entry in the phone book would cost them $300 for the fire truck. And what I did suggest in the letter was that there should be an independent review perhaps of the fire protection system within Area D and Grand Forks to decide what the best idea is, what truck we need and so on. There was mention about Kettle Village, not Kettle Village, what was it called? The new old vote.
Silver Kettle.
Silver Kettle. It is state of the art in fire suppression. The darn thing, I, there are sprinklers in every single room, there are stand pipes on every floor and, excuse me, the need for, someone said, we need perhaps a truck to 100-foot ladder to squirt water from on high. Well, the building can't be more than 50 feet high because that's the bylaw of maximum height of all buildings in the city. And it'd be interesting to know how often the 50-foot fire truck has actually been used in earnest for its purpose. And I haven't written a letter about that, but I might just, I might just, just to find out.
I think some research on your part would be in order and I think that if you were to speak to Dale Harriet, the fire chief, that he could probably give you very succinct answers to those questions.
Yes, indeed. But before he gets too far, everyone says, yes, what a good idea, let's have 100-foot fire truck, a new toy. We've got to be sure that that's what we need because we have to have a certain number of certified vehicles and after a certain number of years, the certification lapses.
Subtle, but calling it a toy, I think, is pushing the limits here. These guys are risking their life out there as volunteers very often and we give them the best equipment we can afford. And in this case, we are being driven not as much by local need as by the insurance companies who will charge the citizens of Grand Forks more money for any weaknesses in our fire suppression system, so no Nigel, you're over the line.
We worship Puntner and yeah, perhaps I was rather flippant to say a toy. However, everybody would love to have the biggest and the best and so on for their profession. And I can't fault them at that. However, maybe a pump a truck at $300,000 would suffice because for the insurance requirements and everything else. I don't know enough about fire suppression, but I'm sure the fire chief does.
And I would say that our CAO would be lax if he hadn't, she in this case, hadn't thoroughly investigated this situation to ensure that that was exactly what they needed before that recommendation was made to council.
That's true, maybe, and I'm sure the homework was done. But when you see a headline, Grand Forks Fire Rescue eyeing new fire engine, without any input from anybody else at all, especially the money, I mean, it would, it only costs each person, each, basically tax payer, $300 if it's a biggie about.
Yes, I agree. It's a big expense and we did take it very seriously in our region.
Well, perhaps I will.
We should be more concerned about the fireman's calendar with all the new pictures in it than we are about the fire.
I might even buy one, especially if they were semi-naked perhaps.
Yeah, they're not, it's very tasteful.
No, I, when they have the ladder up in overweight, I go along and shoot rude things to them and put some money in their, in their boots and so on.
Good man. Okay, thank you.
Something was, the gentleman mentioned about how bylaws come along. I mean, we too often get into first, second, third reading. I mean, it's choo-choo. It's carried, carried, carried and not even, your worship, you sort of say, anybody dissents. You don't give them a chance to have any dissent on that. Why can't we on some of the bylaws have once, the first one in one time and then the second after people have had a chance to digest it and think about it and write about it?
In fact, by legislation, we have to wait to pass a final reading. There is a process.
Yes, indeed.
However, at the regional table, they can do first, second, and third, and final all in one step.
Right.
I think we are far more diligent than our regional brothers.
But isn't it better for every two weeks to bring first reading, then two weeks later, second reading?
That would stretch things out.
I don't know. There may be on some bylaws which affect people. Now, the other, another couple of things, the green bin situation, you say that there hasn't been much dissent. Two letters to the editor, one on the 26th from Mr. Dave Milton and one on the 3rd of October from Mr. David Jans.
Yes, I have both those gentlemen.
Yes. Though the only two, I'm probably who can, who can write a decent letter and can send it off to the letter, to the editor. But basically, when I first came to Canada in 1980, you put everything in a garbage can. And since then, we have been whittled away. Well, now there are about 10 or 11 different things where you've got to separate things out. Batteries, there's lead acid batteries there, other batteries, et cetera. And so it goes on and on and on.
Nigel, I'm going to have to terminate your presentation.
The last one, which is...
I would like to answer that one, which I think, you know, been involved in, I've been involved in the Environment Committee for a long time. These are all things that protect the environment from insult, from all the things that we throw in the landfill. I think that we're one of the most progressive communities and when we look around the province, there are some communities who are not recycling because it costs them too much money. So I'm very proud of this community.
I agree entirely and I commend ourselves for it.
Yes, when I came here, we didn't, we didn't even have a dump attendant. We could go to the dump anytime we wanted and bring home anything we wanted, which seemed like a good idea at the time. But if you look closely at it, I think that we're operating the dump like a good business and trying to not have to have another dump in future.
There was a mention about, you know, the cost, it's only gone up by, was it $1 per month, et cetera. That's unless you buy additional bags. It's gone up 200%.
Yes.
$3 a per tag rather than $1 per tag.
Yes, and I would dearly like to be able to reward people for having less garbage.
Agreed.
We haven't found a mechanism to do that and still support the recycling efforts that we're involved in. So I sympathize with Mr. Milton. I would like it to work like water where we had a garbage meter, but we don't.
Yeah, indeed. One system has to suit all, there's no doubt about it.
Exactly. So one last comment?
The last one I have is on road signs, one of my favorite. We now have the most serious dangerous intersection on 72nd Avenue. It must be a serious one because they put two more stop signs up where Cypress Way comes into it. Now Cypress Way, probably, the current management of council haven't got the faintest about Cypress Way. It's a very short road. There are four houses on Cypress Way. Technically, there are two more on the corners, actually. There are about eight vehicles that drive up Cypress Way. I suspect that the stop signs put there are, well, probably not to stop vehicles like that, but perhaps to slow people down. Somebody might have mentioned it was going a bit fast because the road is a kilometer dead straight. It's the longest drag strip we have in Grand Forks. But I've never seen anybody going faster along it. I live just opposite it and it, all I can say is it is sheer folly to put those signs there. And I was thinking of writing to this CAO to find out the rationale for those signs.
Well, and I will ask our staff to report back to us on that particular intersection. Nigel, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much.
Sorry that it took too long.
Well, you put a lot of thought into it. Thank you.
Well, I still owe you the written comments of the 11 points I produced about two months ago. It can come.
Okay, I'll look forward to those.
Thank you.
Further from the audience, seeing none, I'll take a motion to, Counselor Doherty?